We need to take a roll call, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, all trustees are present. Uh, we could kick it off. Again, this evening, obviously, we're here for the Home Rule discussion. And what we're gonna do is I'll show the agenda. Obviously, this is about the Home Rule, but more importantly, it's about options for our financial funding. And we're gonna go through that a little bit. We're gonna do a short presentation and then open it up to questions and answer, Q and A. And then after that, we will have our typical public forum. Again, obviously, we have a lot of people here tonight. Totally appreciate everyone coming out. I've heard from a lot of people. I've seen stuff online. This is what it's about. This is why we're having the referendum. We have to find out what everyone wants. We want to hear from people. Um, and I tell you what, if someone came up to the normal person and said, hey, Home Rule's in your town. You for it? You know, without knowing anything, obviously, you know, the question would be no. So, uh, what we're doing here tonight is to share the pluses and minuses of Home Rule. This is an option. This is one option. We have other options. Uh, so, and we want to make that clear. This is not the only thing we could do. This is not something we can be for or against as a board. The purpose of tonight is to talk about the pluses and minuses. So, uh, please keep that in mind. Again, a short presentation. Uh, just want to ask one quick question. How many people read the newsletter? Okay, so a good majority. I just want to make sure. Because during the Q and A, um, you know, obviously, we tried putting as much information out there as possible. Uh, I think I probably put half of you to sleep if you're reading it at night. But, uh, again, we want to share as much information as we can with you. So with that being said, uh, tonight, quickly, we're gonna go through, uh, just the financial situation we're in. Again, this Home Rule is an option based on, uh, where we are financially. We wouldn't even be here talking about this if, if we were not in the financial situation we're in. Uh, we'll follow that up about general information about Home Rule. We'll talk about the pluses and minuses of it. Uh, we'll talk about, um, you know, the various limits and checks on it. And like I said, we'll end it with a, a, a question and answer period. Uh, we, we do want to keep this efficient from a Q and A, okay? So, uh, several of you have been here during a public meeting. Uh, public comment period is limited to how many minutes? Three minutes, okay? During the Q and A process, what we want to do is get to many, as many questions as possible. So during the Q and A period, what we want to do is, if you, if you have a question, raise your hand. We're gonna be passing the microphone out. If you could just ask your question, we'll answer it. And we'll try and get to as many questions as possible. Uh, then after that, we will have that, that open public comment period as well, okay? So, uh, with that being said, I want to, uh, obviously introduce everyone. We have the board here tonight. We have George Schaefer, who's our village administrator. We have trustee Rick Sinagalski. Rick, you want to stand up or wave your hand? Ron Stapleton, Ken McLaugherty, Debbie Blanser, Ryan Kozneski, and Dave Macher. They will, uh, help me out as much as possible if there's something I can't answer. But, uh, just want to make sure you know who your board is. Again, we talked about various options. Again, this is one of the options that we're talking about. Quickly, just gonna go through the financial background of where we're at from a village standpoint. Currently, our financial position is very good. We have an excellent bond rating. In fact, we have, uh, the highest credit rating you could get, uh, as a non-Home Rule community. We're double A too. Uh, you could see, obviously, the state of Illinois and Cook County much farther down the road. I'm sure this hasn't even been updated yet. State of Illinois continues to drop. Also, from a financial standpoint, I don't know if this is, if my clicker's not working here. There we go. Uh, our cash position. We have, uh, a policy, from a board perspective, that we are always going to have 30% of our annual expenditures in the bank. Uh, or close to it. Uh, so that's about a, a $3 million balance, give or take. As you could see, uh, post-bubble, uh, as we implemented that, the previous boards have done a phenomenal job getting that up there again. Another recession's gonna hit sooner or later. We have to be prepared. So from a financial standpoint, as far as from a, a credit rating and, and money in the bank, you look at us and say, hey, we're in very good shape. Also, is from a balance sheet perspective, our debt. We continue to want to pay down debt. And we are committed as a board to pay down debt. Uh, one, we wouldn't be here talking about Home Rule if we wanted to just go and finance, uh, some of these things we want to do. That is not what we want to do. We want to pay down debt. Debt has come down significantly. Fiscal year 19 is the fiscal year we're in right now. That ends, uh, in May of next year. We've taken our debt down from 35 million. It's gonna be sub 30 million. Uh, each year, we have, uh, what is it, George? Approximately $2 million in debt. Yeah, so, just to put it in perspective, we pay 3.2 million dollars a year in our operating expenses. That either pays down, uh, principal or interest. Uh, we've, we've continued to monitor our debt. We, we've refinanced our debt. Uh, we did that, uh, a year and a half ago, actually before the interest rates went up. So, uh, we've done a very good job as far as minimizing our, our debt costs. So, if you look at it, we, we continue to want to pay down debt. We got good cash in the bank. Our credit rating, uh, is solid. Uh, but the reason why we're here tonight is if you go on a go-forward basis, if you look at our projections, we do a budget every year. We have to sign off on a balanced budget. Uh, I know that's unique, uh, you know, in this state of Illinois where it took us, you know, three or four years to do it. But we sign off on a balanced budget. Our revenues, we're facing two negatives right now. We have revenues going down. We have expenses going up. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. I'll just show you the numbers. Uh, I spent a lot of time on this topic, uh, in the, uh, state of the village. Uh, that's online. It's on YouTube. Uh, check that out. It's the same conversation I had and I'm gonna have tonight. Obviously, it's gonna be a more summarized version. But check that out if you've not seen it. Uh, bottom line is, is that we have three to, we, we actually have four major revenue sources. Property taxes is one of them. Uh, people would be surprised, uh, if you don't look at your property tax bill in detail. Uh, seven cents goes towards the Village of Lamont. Uh, that, that's what we're talking about here tonight. That's what covers our police. That's what covers our public works. You know, our planning, our permitting, so forth, so on. Seven cents, uh, is, comes out of your property tax bill. And property taxes, like I said, is one of, one of our three major revenue sources. What you're seeing here, going from 2010 to the far right, are our three major revenues. As you could see, over the last four years, these have dipped down. Uh, they've dipped down, uh, pretty much across the board. Sales tax has been the one solid that's been somewhat stable. Uh, but we've had revenue decreases, not only our sales tax, but our income tax as well. Income tax is a major revenue, uh, stream for us. Income tax is not the income you guys learn, earn, I should say. All income tax, state income tax goes to the state. We cut the check there. They take it in total. They cut money back to us on a pro-rata, uh, portion. So we have approximately, uh, 17,000 people here in Lamont. Uh, we're, we had 16,000 at the last census. They cut the money back to us. There's two problems right now going on in the state of Illinois. We have people moving up. We have income earners moving out. The pool of income is going down, income taxes. Even though our population is going up, we're gonna go from 16,000 to 17,000 over a 10-year period. Because the state of Illinois is going down, we receive less. The other major issue is that last year, when Springfield balanced the budget, they took 10% of our income tax away. Flat out took it away. Every, every municipality received this hit. Uh, again, that is due to the, the state we're in. Uh, so when we talk about why are, is income tax going down, it has nothing to do with what we're doing here in the land. These are just other revenue sources. We have, uh, motor fuel tax revenues again. The point in all these slides is, is that they're, they're going down for various reasons. They're going down due to decreased population in Illinois. You know, the motor fuel tax is going down due to, you know, more, uh, hybrid cars. Uh, so we got revenues going down. Like I said earlier, we got expenses going up. Uh, these are expenses that really, this ship is sailed. Uh, you know, we have pension costs, the bottom two. We have the IMRF. This would be all of our employees that are not police. They're, they're on the IMRF. It's been pretty, uh, uh, stable in that area. It's gone up 38%. It's been stable over the last three or four years. But if you look over this period of almost 10 years, it's up 38%. The other two, the pension, the police pension, uh, is up 78%. We cannot really change those. These are policemen that have put their time in. We have to, we have to honor these commitments. Uh, the same with, uh, our, our employee benefits. Our employee benefits for health insurance, obviously, that's based on the employees here at this time. But the problem is, is that our revenues are, are ticking up for a while, now they're ticking down. Insurance, employee insurance, as you guys all know, keeps going up at multiples of inflation. So, this is where we're at. We recognize the situation. We know it's not sustainable to keep doing what we're doing because unless revenues come from somewhere, we are not going to be able to continue these increased costs. And what we've, what we've done is, you would say, well, gee, if expenses are going up, what's going on with your head counts? What are your employee FTEs? You must be increasing your FTEs. Actually, it's the opposite. Over time, from fiscal year, I know this is a busy schedule here, but from fiscal year '09, we're at a height of 81 employees. We've gone down 22% in our FTEs. Down to 63 at the end of last year. We're actually going to be down to 60, uh, by the end of, uh, this coming fiscal year. So we've decreased over just the last 18 months, 10% of our FTEs. Uh, we, we've done a model change with our police staff. We used to have, uh, where's chief at? No, chief. We used to have, like, four patrol officers and one sergeant on duty at all time?
Assigned.
Assigned. Now we're down to, to three police officers and one sergeant. Can we go more? Can we reduce it to two to one? You know, it's, you know, we don't think we can. We don't think that is the right thing to do. Uh, we continue to try and cut at other areas. We will continue to, to, you know, you can always fine tune what you can do. But the bottom line is, is that we think we're at a sticking point right now. And that's why, you know, we're here talking today. So, uh, we have a financial, um, issue here, obviously. Let me see if this will work. Uh, we recognize this early, um, just going into this year. Uh, and probably about January of last year, we have a deficit of 1.2 million dollars. That's what we have with our projections of revenue, projections of expenses. We have 1.2 million dollars. We gotta balance this budget. So the way we balance this budget is we have to start cutting. And we start cutting all of our infrastructure. Our, our, all of our water, all of our, uh, our roads, just about. We've cut that. Uh, and again, that is not sustainable. We cannot continue to, 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 you know, be a, a vibrant and growing, uh, community. Again, we, we've, we've recognized this. We've, you know, we're, we're focusing on economic development. We're, we're gonna grow smart. You know, back in the heyday, we were doing over 200 houses a year. We're, we're doing about half that, 100 a year. We've done that for about the last three or four years. That's probably about right. You know, we want to do things right. We want to grow right. Uh, we want, you know, add the housing, but we also want to add the right businesses in town. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get some of these empty storefronts filled. We want businesses that people all want. You know, whatever it may be, you know, breakfast place. Get the bowling alley open. Get another, uh, you know, fine dining place. Get the Old Chapains filled. Uh, those are the things we're working on. Get the downtown filled. Uh, so these are the things we've recognized to help, you know, is this gonna solve our problem? No, but, you know, it's called leverage. You could still take on 100 houses and leverage the same cost structure. So with that being said, that's, that's why we're here. And Home Rule, the referendum, again, it's just one option. Uh, we're not here to debate if it's the best option. We're here to throw it out there as an option. We've looked at several of the options. We think it should be on the referendum ballot. And that's why we're here tonight. Uh, just a quick backdrop on, on Home Rule authority. Uh, again, it's, it's for towns with a population. You're automatically Home Rule if your population is 25,000 or more. Again, our population is 16,000 on the census of 2010. It's gonna be approximately 17,000. Uh, why do they give Home Rule to towns over 25,000, right? You know, what, that's a, a basic question. Why would they do that? Uh, the reasons why they do that is typically, and I'm, you know, painting with a broad brush here, is usually bigger towns have, you know, uh, more complicated issues, you know? And, you know, people might argue, we might have that here. We, we have a lot of truck traffic in this town. We have a lot of industry. We're by a refinery. We have a lot of in, industry along our canals. Um, people would say, oh, that's good. That's, yeah, it is good. It's good for people that have a job and live here in town. But none of those facilities generate any tax money for us, really. Uh, maybe a little bit of property tax if you have a building. Uh, but Sitgo, obviously, is not in the Village of Lamont. They're, they're not generating anything, you know, for, for the village. You know, there's a little bit of park district. There's a little bit of schools in there, you know, from a tax dollar. But just want to make sure that's clear. So it does add, uh, additional authorities to, to the government, to the local government. Just real quick, you know, our, our surrounding towns are pretty much all Home Rule. Either by 25,000, uh, which most of them are. My clicker's slow here. So what, what would be the potential advantages? So, the potential advantages are the ability, really, to do two things. To get an additional revenue stream. And, you know, we're proposing a 1% sales tax increase. Um, we could, we could get that increase by just doing a referendum, uh, to increase the sales tax. So people would ask, why are you doing Home Rule? Why don't you just do that? You need the money, just do that. Great question. The reason why is that we have other non-resident uses that we can hit up for abuse of our roads specifically. And that is the trucks. Uh, we, we have had increased truck traffic here in town. I mean, just to show a hands, does anyone have an issue with the truck traffic in town? Okay. And, and we've been getting calls on it specifically. We have a lot more, uh, places, businesses opening up. Again, those trucks add no, zero, zero benefit to our town except make us frustrated when we're running late to work in the mornings. Uh, they add nothing. And, and, you know, I don't know what the statistic is, but the weight of one truck equals, you know, I don't know, 50 or 100 cars, something like that. Bottom line is, is if, if we're gonna have that truck traffic in town as a non-Home Rule, which is what we are, we can't touch that. So if, if we have, um, truck parking in our town as non-Home Rule, we cannot charge them for that. Uh, we would be proposing to potentially charge, uh, an additional fee for that. In addition, um, if there was motor fuel tax for diesel fuel as a non-Home Rule, uh, we would not be able to charge for that. Uh, again, if we have all this truck traffic, if we're selling diesel fuel at a truck station, again, we'd be looking to, to at least recoup, uh, the, the wear and tear they put on our roads. So again, when you're non-Home Rule, you do not have that flexibility. So that's, that is in a nutshell, um, you know, why we're proposing Home Rule. Again, what we're trying to do is not have all of our residents pay 100% for this, for this delta. You know, this million-dollar delta. Sales tax, most of us here shop in Lamont. We recognize that there's a lot of the sales tax dollars being paid by us, so we're breaking even there. We do have some big sales tax, uh, monies that come in from non-residents. Either it be, we do have a concrete company in town, one industrial user that sells retail. The mulch pile sell retail. Most of that is being sold outside of Lamont. So that would not be hitting our pockets per se. Uh, as far as the breakout of, of the sales tax, again, we're gonna be going from 9% to 10%. Unfortunately, we are in Cook County. Cook County charges, as many of you've noticed, Will County's 8%. Uh, they charge a, a percentage more, uh, above us, uh, as far as from a, a county standpoint. The math is, is pretty easy here. What we're trying to do is to get a million dollars a year in infrastructure. Again, dedicated towards building and our water system. To get there, we have the 1% sales tax increase. We have these user fees. That's about 1.5 million dollars in total. We would be looking to take away the vehicle sticker in exchange. So that's where we're getting about our million-dollar, um, uh, funding for the, the vehicles in the roads. Just in case, if, if anyone has any questions on that math. Again, you know, we're trying to shift the burden from residents to non-residents. If we go the Home Rule route. Okay, so, um, what are the negatives? We pass Home Rule. Uh, we have more authority to increase property taxes, to increase debt, and to, you know, basically have increased regulations. We recognize that. Again, I don't think anyone in here wants any of that. I, I know I don't, uh, but these are the negatives. We, we do not want to, to, to increase property taxes. We don't want to take on more debt. That's why we're putting this out there as an option. As far as, you know, to, to counterbalance that, um, if we were to, to go Home Rule, we've already passed resolutions saying what we will not do, okay? If we go Home Rule, and, and this is where I'd love to hear more suggestions, if, if there are any other concerns. But we, we've committed, if we go Home Rule, we will not increase property taxes. We, and we're signing a resolution to do this. And people would say, hey, a resolution can always be reversed. Uh, I get it. Uh, we all get it. Uh, but we're committed as a board, this board here, uh, to, to say, hey, we will not, we will not take property taxes above the existing caps. Uh, debt, we will not issue new debt for special projects. For revenue-based projects, you know, we, you know, the, the soccer stadium that everyone knows Toyota Park, I mean, that's catastrophic. And, and we're committed, if there's going to be any type of, you know, revenue producing, we would have to have a referendum, uh, on, on that. And we would be even, I think, willing, if it's a, uh, you know, if, if there's a concern about it, we'd be willing to, to allow any backdoor referendum, uh, which is basically a way around, uh, keeping the board in check. We would even sign off on a back, you know, again, we want to hear the ideas. We thought these were the ones. I heard that idea, uh, over the last week. I'm like, yeah, this is, these are our intentions. Again, our intention is to fill the money gap and to take, uh, advantage of the trucks and, and other user fees. Uh, regulations, um, I think, uh, there's a, there's, I don't want to say misnomer, but, you know, from a, a sales standpoint of, of houses, we do not want to, to do any more regulatory work on houses as far as point of inspection. If you want to sell your house, we're not going to inspect it. You sell your house. We're not gonna put a transfer tax. First of all, new Home Rule towns cannot put a transfer tax. We're not, we're not looking to do that. Um, the only other potential, uh, issue that was brought up, and I heard it from, from several subdivisions, is, uh, these new Airbnbs. Um, that would give us more. Again, we're not, we're not looking to change that regulation on Airbnbs. But if there was enough consensus on that, you know, we might be able to have more authority to do that, especially in certain subdivisions or certain residential. You know, maybe we allowed in the downtown, but, but, you know, the, the residential, we're okay. But again, these are the things that we could do a lot easier under Home Rule. Uh, as far as, uh, the limits and checks and Home Rule authority, um, you know, there are some limits. We don't have carte blanche, you know, uh, you know, obviously, you know, you're gonna vote us out. We're residents. We're residents just like you. Um, you know, I get the argument, hey, well, you might get elected, you, you make this change and we vote you out, but the damage has been done. Hey, I get that. Um, again, you voted us in, I, you know, for at least trusting us for, for that time period. But I get that argument. The other thing that we need to talk about here is pensions. We do not have any more authority under Home Rule to address pensions. We, we have to rely on the state. We've not received any pension reform at all from the state. And when you hear that, basically, you know, there are, you know, one example I always hear is, you know, pension reform. Why don't you have one administrator for all the pensions? You know, why do you have a different administrator potentially making their 1%? Again, um, we, we have no, uh, say, in, in, in the pension side. Okay. All right. Quickly here, uh, if it doesn't pass, okay, we, we have options. Again, Home Rule is one option. Uh, if, if it doesn't pass, obviously, you know, we have, one of the options is we continue to defer our infrastructure improvements. Again, we have to balance the budget. Uh, we can, uh, go for a new referendum and talk about maybe in, uh, increasing property tax rates or increasing debt. I've heard from people concerning that as well. Uh, that, hey, why don't we just raise the property tax, forget Home Rule? Or raise the debt, forget Home Rule? Uh, I have a problem with raising debt. I have a problem with both of them, but, you know, this is a consensus. You know, we, we want, you know, again, those are options. Um, we can, we can attain, um, increased revenue streams. We do have revenues. We do have, under Home Rule, we're allowed to charge a sticker tax. We, we could raise that. We, we have our own water. We could raise water rates. That's another way of, of filling the gap from a revenue standpoint. Uh, and again, uh, property tax, uh, we can levy for current debt obligations. Again, we have, um, approximately $30 million in debt. Uh, it should be noted that, you know, the infrastructure that we've put into place over the last, you know, 20, 30 years, you know, from the police building to acquisition of land to, uh, you know, water tower, all of that, um, did not go in the tax trail. That, that is, that is what makes up the majority of our $30 million. We can continue to go that route. Uh, again, I'm a fiscal conservative type of guy. That's, that's probably not the route I want to go. Um, we can continue to try and do more drastic staff reductions. Again, I think we've done a very good job, uh, you know, even over the last 10 years. You know, they, they had to cut. When that, when that bubble came, they had to cut. You know, we, we've cut on police. I mean, that's still, you know, and, and we put the word drastic there because that's where we think it is. It would be drastic. Again, we're not trying to scare anyone, but, you know, we think we're at somewhat of a breaking point from a staff,[1691.38] breaking point from a staff, but that's always an option. Again, if it doesn't pass, you know, it goes pretty much all, you know, to the village residents, you know, the head count could affect current service level. So again, what we want to do is open it up to a question and answer. You want to raise your hand, if you could just ask one question, let's just be considerate and try and get as many questions as possible. We will try and, you know, answer it as efficiently and as effective as possible if there's any follow-up items. All of this, right now, is going to be videotaped. We're gonna show this, you know, on Channel Six, and we'll also kind of post the answers to questions as well on the website. So with that being said, I'd like to open it up for Q and A.
Mr. Mayor, you just said that we're possibly gonna be getting about a million dollars from this one percent?
Yes.
Okay. And with them, you said that there's a possibility that we could eliminate village stickers?
Yes.
Okay. I know village stickers are every two years. There's an income from that that's approximately 1 million dollars, so that, that's 500 dollars in a year. Why would you already throw that away as half of your income?
No, that's a good, good point. Again, reason why we contemplated that is twofold. We've heard it from residents, that that is somewhat of a nuisance, having to do that. The second thing is, is it does take staff too as well. But again, we'd be open to keeping the village vehicle sticker in place and bring down sales tax only half a percent, to, you know, to make that math work.
I think we need to point out that it was a million five.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, a million five less the 500,000.
And that difference.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm against home rule because I have had experience with it, trying to sell my mother's home and another place just east of here. Well, the inspector came and said, I had a buyer. Inspector came to the house and said, you can't sell this house. I went, what do you mean? I've got a buyer. Well, you have to fix everything up in this house before you can sell it. I said, what? I don't have that money. I'm the executor of the estate. So I had to go to court. I got a letter. And they said, I have 30 days to fix up that house, or they, if I didn't have it fixed up, they'd fine me 15,000 dollars. So you know what I did? I deeded the property to the village.
Wow.
And I didn't, I didn't pay the taxes for three years. I gave it over, let them pay the taxes. The house, it was a little old house, I have to tell you.
So what the...
What I'm concerned about is people who live here, like seniors, who live in these small little homes and can't afford to be fixing them up so they look like 500,000 dollar homes. I'm concerned that the village might have too much power to fine these people, because that's what they were doing with my mother. That's all I have to say.
No, I appreciate that, and that is definitely the one thing we do not want to do. We do not want, and we've signed off, we'll not impose any point of sale inspection, and we will not, we will not implement, obviously, any transfer tax. We can't implement any transfer taxes.
I'm a little confused about how we would generate revenue from the trucks. Since they're coming through, there's no place to buy diesel fuel in town, of which I'm aware. So I'm a little confused of how we would get revenue from trucks coming through town, and you mentioned diesel revenue. I don't see it.
No, no, good question. So right now, we have both on the south side of town by Main Street, or the north side of town by Main Street and Route 83, we have a potential filling station going in there, as well as one that's more along the way down by Target and Coles. There's a filling station going in there. Again, we have, that would be catching the traffic from 135th Street. So those would be two future, that's more on the future. That's the fueling. Where we can get immediate, though, is for these places that are in the village right now. We have property in the village right now, where they could park trucks right now. We cannot charge for it. Cook County, they will charge for those spaces. We can charge 10 dollars a spot. Again, I'm not here to be big brother and to, you know, go against business. We're here to just be able to get our funding back that they're, you know, wearing and tearing on the roads.
You know, after reading this, you notice that you came up with Q and A, questions and answers. It says here that you would have to cut services, so, but you weren't specific about what services. That's one thing. A second thing is that you kind of alluded to pensions being part of the problem, and, you know, I just walked in and you addressed this, but is that pensions for education? Is that policeman-fireman pensions? Is there anything that you can do to change that? You know, and I have a son who's in law enforcement, so I'm not against pensions, but I'd probably get beat up for this next one.
No, 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 yeah, just to be clear.
The next remark is this, we have a great fire department. I don't know how many fires we have in this area. From what I understand, the fire department, the folks, the firemen in the fire department come and they put up 12-hour shifts, and there's not a lot that they do. I'm wondering if you could cut the personnel in that or somehow way control or tailing benefits, so. I'm not gonna tell you where I live.
Yeah. Okay, so just to be clear, we'll get to the first part, which was the services. So Illinois, unlike any other state, you have different, what they call taxing bodies. So this is the only taxing body we're talking about here tonight. The park district is not underneath, you know, us. The library, the fire department, not underneath us. This is just the Lamont Village, which leads to your first part of the question, is what services are you talking about? The services, what we're talking about are primary, the police, and our public works, public works that, you know, follows our streets, cuts our grass, keeps our streets, and, you know, as well as the planning as well.
Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to acknowledge the gentleman that first spoke. I do have four recurrent vehicle stickers. I hate to say we're all conditioned to some degree. We've been used to doing it. It's not the biggest pain in the butt, it's getting that razor blade off and getting the glue off. To me, you know, I think it's foolish to give that up. The main question that I have for you is, where are the checks and balances if home rule does go forward? You know, this current board has issued a resolution to promise to do not to do certain things, but I don't believe a resolution is good enough for one board to another. I don't think it's legally binding. Could we have a village charter or a constitution that would be able to limit the current board's power? I.e., we're not gonna argue the numbers. We know we need the money to maintain what we have. We have a great village. But the question is, I don't want to give you a thousand plate checks. I want to give you one plate check at a time. Where's the checks and balances?
Yeah, I mean, there is, you know, there is, there's some trust in this, right? And there's some trust in, you know, hey, you know, we'll be gone sooner or later. You have a new administration, a new mayor comes in, right? I mean, that, these are the things we have to ask that next person running. That's why we, you know, have the election process, but yeah, there definitely, the short answer is, there is a trust aspect to it. It's easy to say, well, vote them out, right? You know, because then you can say, hey, they've already, you know, killed the resolution and, but there is a, there is a trust factor in this. You know, some people would say, hey, there's a trust factor in us not raising the debt right now and abiding some of this, because we do have some of those powers, but we don't, you know, we don't want to do that, you know, and we won't, you know, we won't do that unless we talk about this. That's where we want to have these open forums. We want to have input from the public, but yeah, there is a...
Well, can we get a village charter or constitution prior to setting this up?
Is there? Yes.
Yeah, as I understand it, if you change of government, that might get a referendum required. I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll do some more research. Yeah, I think we've looked into this. I think we have to still abide by the rules of home rule. So I don't know if we, I mean, we did talk about this, because we're trying to be as strong as possible as far as committing to what we obviously will not do.
You could also pass a referendum to withdraw.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's always an option, is to have a referendum to pass the home rule, or, I'm sorry, to withdraw the home rule.
That was precisely my question when Rick just said, I was gonna ask, were there parameters on the home rule that you run it for a three- to five-year period of time, and if you found out that it's really working well, the amounts could be adjusted back, you know, just like you talked about, the stickers, maybe one and a half a percent instead of, say, one percent, and it can be adjusted, or after a three-year, you find out that, you know, it's not working what you thought it would be. I just don't know what level of flexibility is to move with that.
I mean, we have the flexibility to, you know, like we talked earlier, if we wanted to get rid of the vehicle sticker, or, I'm sorry, keep the vehicle sticker, and instead of making 1.5 million, we only make, you know, 100,000, I think the math would be two-thirds of a, you know, a tax increase, we could do that. We could also do retracting it as well. If, for instance, hey, if we find out we do not have, we do not need that million or whatever it is on infrastructure that year, I would be, I'd be willing from a referendum or from a resolution standpoint to say, hey, we're going to look at this on an annual basis, Terry, and say, hey, do we need this or do we not need this, or we make it open-ended. I mean, I'm not gonna talk to the other people on the board, but I think we'd be open to adjusting that down, to look at this on an annual basis. Do we need this, this, you know, one percent or two-thirds percent increase? Absolutely.
John, can you adjust the resolution, though? So the question was, is the resolution binding for the next board?
It's binding for the next board, but they could potentially vote it down.
They could vote it down.
Well, it's the board. It's a board, yeah.
This board could vote it down.
Yes, this board could vote it down, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, will this presentation be online?
Yeah, we'll post the, we'll post the PDF, and there'll be a video, and if you need a lot more information, you got a lot more time on your hands, check out the village. Stay in the village. It's on YouTube as well.
All right. The second question is, I used to live in Bonneville, and they added the Promenade, they actually went out and looked for businesses to sell them. So the Promenade, the IKEA, the number of stores, they were, because of the tax base it brought in, they eliminated vehicle stickers and other stickers in the life. Is the city going to pursue something like that also?
Yeah, I think, to follow up on Terry's question, hey, we should review it every year, and if we're bringing in more, or if we even need the additional, we rescind it. Absolutely. I think that's where we have to, you know, good questions. We'll, you know, sign a resolution to put parameters in on an annual basis, or shorter maybe.
Instead of rescinding it, why don't you decide to put it toward the debt? If there's extra money, it goes to debt, it doesn't go to...
You're saying the vehicle...
Vehicle sticker.
Yeah, the vehicle sticker.
Unless you've given something, you should never...
Right, right. I think, again, I think that's, that's the decision we need to make, you know, do we, do we keep it or do we not? I'm, you know, I'm hearing, keep it, I'm hearing, you know, not keep, you know, or vice versa, so.
Well, of course, you know what vehicles are in town. When you have the vehicle sticker, you know you live here in Lamont. That's the positive thing about vehicle stickers all the way around, if you know your community members.
Sure.
So, so it is a good thing, and it is revenue, so why get rid of it every year? But make sure everybody vays for them, because so many community members don't get their vehicle stickers. So, you know, you need better tactics in getting everybody their stickers.
So I'm gonna piggyback off of her comment. I do agree.
Absurd. Yeah, Ryan's point, again, the sales tax newsletter will not be on groceries or merchandise.
So to her comment, my question is, how do you calculate the vehicle stickers? What's your tracking mechanism? Because I know quite a few people that have lived here more than 10 years, and like, I'm not gonna buy it until I get caught. And then how much revenue, if everybody that owned a car, living in Lamont, feasibly, you could do the math, bought their stickers as they should, I would think that you would almost double it. I'm sorry, I can go to the dog park and find a lot of them, and that's lots of revenue.
Again, this is residents only, obviously, so, village residents.
Right, but what's your tracking mechanism? So in other words, if you know that they still live there, do you have it on a database where you can say, this is your warning? Then you implement it fine. That's what I would do.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you, and, you know, just, I mean, there's obviously turnovers in cars, you know, every two years.
Can we purchase a list of the state's secretary of state, they match up their databases? Yes. Can we see that on the line? Yeah, no, a few years ago, the village purchased a database from the, or...
Use the microphone.
Thank you. A few years ago, the village purchased a list from the Illinois Secretary of State, which had all of your registered vehicles, and we were matching up our databases. So we could do that again if the vehicle stickers stays.
Yeah. Chief, any statistics on how many people you call over without the vehicle sticker or...
You know, when we talk about the reduction of services, the individual that was...
Use the microphone.
The individual that was doing most of the evening sticker enforcement was one of the positions that we reduced this year. It's just part of the reduction of services.
I have a question.
Yes.
I didn't receive that report that everyone's holding, that we handed out, but I did get a newsletter from you, I think it was in the spring, and in your letter, you addressed, this is a two-part question, you addressed that Cook County was doing a land grab on some of these brand-new subdivisions. Is that causing part of our fiscal problem here? And my other part, let me, so I don't forget, is that gonna discourage others coming in here or for the board to approve them because of Cook County doing that? It just feels like they've got their boot on our throat right now.
Yeah, so that lawsuit is, we're trying to wrap that up, and we're negotiating probably literally as we speak. Hang in there. We're hoping to get that resolved. The state's attorney, again, I didn't want to turn this into, but, you know, to answer your question, the state's attorney suing us 17 properties they want to throw outside of Lamont. We've worked with them. I think it's public record, right? It's public record, the state's attorneys come back and said, all 17 are staying in Lamont. Unfortunately, Pelus, we went to register that settlement with the judge, and Pelus Park came in and intervened and said, wait a second, we don't necessarily agree with that, or we don't think we're being represented. But specifically, to answer your question, it limits our growth. It does. Again, we want to grow smart. We want to grow properly with the right standards, so we won't have jurisdiction over that land that potentially has gone out of Lamont. We've had four major owners that have left, so that's potentially... Is it causing our problem right now? No, I wouldn't necessarily say there, you know, it's, you know, a one-to-one correlation, but it doesn't help us from a growth standpoint.
Now, see, I understood that was two different things. Pelus grabbed part of it, but then Cook County is a down-the-road grab?
Yeah, yeah, they're two separate, they're super separate deals. There was the four landowners, and then the four landowners are in Pelus Park. Those four are in Pelus Park. So right now, we cannot develop, we cannot, you know, regulate whatever. In addition, we have a second lawsuit. That lawsuit's now been settled. They're in Pelus.
Right.
I would consider it piling on. The other lawsuit was, state's attorney comes up and says, hey, you got 17 properties, we're throwing them out. But again, you know, we have an initial settlement, but we'll see what the judge decides on next time. But the state's attorney has agreed with us to keep all 17 in Lamont. That would actually help us out. We have builders in here that have, that are building in some of those 17 properties right now, that, you know, again, that would hurt our, that would hurt their development, because it's tough to sell a house when, you know, you thought you were in Lamont and now you're not.
Mr. Mayor, over here. Again, earlier, you pointed at a graph that showed Lamont, and then you showed, it was the school district and all these others with taxes, and you said, we're not talking about those, but we're talking about the village and home rule. Well, I have to kind of disagree with you. We're talking about Lamont.
Yep.
Okay, Lamont to me is Lamont or is everything. I look at, we have the right to take votes on referendums on every one of our taxing bodies. Why should we allow the village not to have that same idea of, well, let's have a voice in what is being done? We reserve that right to have a voice. We elected you, that's one of our ways to have a voice. We're not, we're not concerned with the trust or anything of that nature, but you're gonna go away, we're gonna go away, other boards are coming, my grandchildren, great grandchildren are becoming, I don't know what's in store for them. I'm looking towards what's happening for them. I would prefer that we were not home rule, and that we were presented with a text that we had to choose, whatever it may be, and have our viewpoints set on it, and not have to deal with home rule.
So if you're saying to increase the seven percent to, you know, eight percent, or whatever, you know, or decrease it?
Well, the board, this board ran on the... And not have to deal with home rule.
So if you're saying to increase the 7% to, you know, 8%, or whatever, you know, or decrease it?
Well, the board, this board ran on the premise that you were promising us that you're gonna look at getting more businesses into this community. You know, and that's one of the things that, you know, we're gonna look forward to you guys doing that. I know, I know that payments coming in, that's gonna be tax money right there. So I, there's other things that are coming in. Hopefully, you never know what will happen. Maybe the state will wake up and surprise us and say, hey, we got some money for you. Wouldn't that be nice? I'm not gonna hold my breath for that, but, you know. No, I'm a believer in, have faith in something that can possibly happen to the good, so...
No, I, no, we're with you, it's, you know, something we're continuing to do. We're trying to, you know, get rid of these lawsuits, and let's bring in, you know, when I say growth, businesses that people want, and we're committed to doing it. Quick question? Yes? So if you want to raise sales tax by 1%, and you're hoping that will keep you even a million dollars? So he asks, what's the calculation of a million dollars, right? How do you get there? What's the math?
He's gonna give it to you.
Yeah, so right now, the math is for the 1% increase is $1.2 million, give or take. That's 1.2, then we have other user fees. And when we're talking about the user fees, we're talking about potentially the trucking, charging for trucking?
That's not what I really meant. So that 1% sales tax, you're saying should be shared by residents and non-residents? So how do you know, okay, residents of the Villas of Lamont will be paying the sales tax when we shop locally, but how many people do you get from outside the village, shopping in the Villas of Lamont? That's gonna make up the difference that, you know, if we all stop shopping in the Villas tomorrow, how much money would you be getting in from that 1%?
Oh, so right now, the income tax that we're bringing in right now, or the sales tax, I'm sorry, sales tax, we can estimate that, you know, a piece of it is non-resident-based. When I say non-resident, if they're buying it in Lamont, that, we're getting that, we're getting that piece, regardless if it's resident or non-resident. Is your question, how do we know the breakout between who's paying resident and non-resident?
Yeah, how do you know you have that many non-residents?
Studies... No, no, that's what we would get regardless if they're all residents or all non-residents. We don't need to know the breakout. We know, right now, we get, we would be getting $1.2 million. That's our run rate right now. For non-medicine and non-groceries, it's $1.2 million. Now, is, some of that's coming from people that live in Homer and shop at Target? Some of that is coming from people buying concrete at Ozinga or Mulch? We know those most likely are non-residents. That's why we're saying, you know, it could be, studies show that typically it's 50%. I would say we're at least 30 or 40% of our sales tax is non-residents, just because we have two major companies down on the industrial river.
Just for clarity?
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
Any brochure here, it says there's gonna be a 1% tax excluding groceries, drugs, and medical expenses. And then further down, it says qualifying food, drug, and medical expenses. Is there a difference?
I, my understanding, it's all medicine.
All medicine. Because in the grocery, there's...
Prepared foods, is it?
Prepared food versus true grocery, for the section of Jewel that has prepared salads. And is that might be taxed, or is it a 1% for true grocery?
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, in other words, it's not 100%.
Not 100%?
On groceries, what he just said.
Correct, yeah, prepared food, we would, there would be a 1% tax on it.
Hi.
Hi.
Quick question, so let's just say for grins and giggles, that the good citizens of Lamont say, let's go with home rule. And this fine board we have right now says, we're not gonna do anything bad, right? We've taken the pledge, we've taken the rock and roll. Let's say the board gets elected a new guy, it's women, men. And they say, uh-uh, we're gonna not take the rock and roll. How quickly can these same good citizens say, uh-uh? What is our aside from having to wait to the next election? How quickly can we undo the home rule?
What is the referendum timeframe?
We can give more detail on that, there has to be petitions filed by the residents before a filing period.
Anybody know?
You'd have to, my understanding would be, you have to have the petitions filed, you have to meet for the next election, so...
So we have to wait to the next election?
That would be my understanding.
Like, two years?
No, 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 you're next.
Could be April, could be, general or municipal election. So any election where the majority of Lamont voters vote, it could be brought back up.
And how often do you matter, for?
Every year, just about, yeah.
So every year, so we would have a term next year to say?
Correct, in theory, you'd probably have a term in April.
Got one here.
Just a quick observation, if I had to, home rule is gonna bypass the local community membership and concentrate that power into the small elite political crowd. We're gonna open up Pandora's box, and I'll give you two quick examples. We know about Bridgeview, if you don't know about Bridgeview, Google it, the stadium. Another issue that comes up is guns. Doesn't matter if you're for or against, or whatever the case would be, with the Hallow Park. There's all kinds of issues that could come up. And like the gentleman in front of me said earlier, I sort of kind of like to pick my poison. Allicard, bring it in front of us, whether it's 1% Lamont Village increase, sign off on it, everybody votes, we move on, instead of sort of kind of, once again, giving you a whole checkbook full of blank checks. I would like to sign off on one and move forward as the village needs to address its issues this way.
Good evening. I'm a little bit concerned about the timeframe in which this whole idea was rolled out. I remember personally being at a meeting back at the beginning of, or maybe middle of August, where home rule was presented, you, the board voted to, you know, put it on the ballot, that was official. And then I saw a couple of comments in a newsletter, probably late summer, mid to late summer. And then it was several weeks after, at least four, five, six, maybe seven weeks, I waited, thinking the village is gonna come, roll something out, and you did, and that was a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, and it was a nice seven-page glossy question-and-answer brochure, answered all, maybe some of the questions that most people had. And you seem to be very thorough in covering a lot of areas. And then I was out of town, I came back, and I saw signs in the yard, you know, yard signs for the home rule, stating, you know, vote for this for our water, vote for this for our roads. I left town thinking I lived in a community that was, you know, we were ahead of the game, balanced budget, $4 million reserves, and then I came back to feeling like, wow, you know, what's wrong with our water? Is there a problem with our, paying for our water system? And are we not keeping up with our roads? And then just hearing you tonight, it's, you know, you're talking about, I understand projected costs, things in the future down the road, but, you know, from what I understand, our water system, our water, we actually have a private enterprise fund for our water that has reserves that the village has even borrowed from in the past. We, I think we have pretty good roads, I don't see a lot of major problems. I mean, we all have work improvements that need to be made, upkeep. I work for the township, we have people that come in all the time, and they're complaining about their roads, we take care of it. I think the public works in the village does a great job. So I think that, you know, when you look at, down the road at the future development in the eastern quadrant, you might need a water tower, you might need some things in the future, but again, if Lamont is always, I'm gonna echo what Dennis said, we've always been the type of town, if you present a need, if we have something that's there that you can show us that we need, we get behind it. If it's good for Lamont, we're gonna vote for it. You could very well do some sort of a referendum for water, roads, whatever you need, we're gonna back you up, if it's good for Lamont. And I just, you know, when you look at different revenue streams, we have a wonderful, you know, downtown area. We've been offered private investors that are gonna be developing that area for economic growth. I just feel like we should work with what we have here. You know, instead of opening ourselves up to future boards, even if, you know, we trust the current board, and you have said you're gonna, you know, limit your power, we have no way of knowing down the road what the next board's gonna do. And, yeah, I mean, we have to be careful about who we elect, but sometimes you just don't know people until they get into office, and it's too late. So I'm very concerned, you know, it's, I guess I'm, I'm gonna publicly say that I'm opposed to this, just because I do think it gives this board and future boards way too much power, and, you know, I just, I feel like, you know, we have a lot going, and I feel like the amount of time, I guess, public dialogue that we've had, this is not enough, this one meeting. We're going, you know, we're going to the polls Monday, you know, early voting starts Monday. So I don't think we've had enough of these meetings. Maybe it's too late to postpone this, but I would like to see it, you know, more dialogue and more public comment before I would ever back it.
Is there, yeah, and what I encourage, Kathy, is, you know, whatever additional questions we have, you know, we'd be more than happy to entertain that. Again, we were, we started this process, we talked about it, you know, back in the state of the village, which was in February, I think, it's been on the public, you know, meetings, we televise all our meetings. So again, we'll do a better job if, you know, we run into this type of referendum again. You know, obviously, we will, we will try and give more forewarning. And with that being said, I, you know, is there any other question? I think that more of a, we can go into the public section, is there any other specific questions?
What is this board's intention? Should this pass? Should the 1% come through? What is this board's intention, should that 1% fail to generate the revenue you expect? What is the board gonna do now that they have all these expanded powers? I assume you've generated, I assume you've had talks about that.
Yes, so if the 1% does not come through, you know, obviously, our sales tax has been the most stable out of all of our revenues, it's pretty stable. And when we talk about, hey, how much is going to come through? Again, you're looking at a sales tax amount, which equals 1%, but that includes the groceries as well, and as well as, you know, the over-the-counter. The one piece we'd be getting would be the 1.2 million. So we would be looking, you know, again, that's probably as stable as you can get. We continue to increase our, you know, our households here, so we've gone from $16,000 to $17,000. I don't think, you know, we would be seeing a dramatic increase if we, instead of getting the 1.2 million, and we get $100,000 less. If we don't get it, we're gonna cut. As simple as that. We don't, we don't, we're not gonna go for another percentage in a quarter. Okay, any other questions?
I think what we learned here tonight, John, maybe this has been new to you, but what I heard, is people don't mind the vehicle taxes, and it's drawing in a million dollars, or 500, or whatever you wanna do. I'm proud of Lamont, I like the sticker on my car. Chief, I'm sorry, I, I'm disappointed to hear you say, well, we took a person off of doing that. I got, I got next-door neighbors who got six cars in their yards, and I've called you guys, nothing ever happens. So I, I'm, I was kind of disappointed for you to say that, that it's a responsibility to make sure these cars have stickers. So I think the people, this is Lamont, and I've always found Lamont people, if you need something, we'll come up and help you. For this issue, though, I, it reminds me of the sports complex. I feel deceived by it. I voted for you because I thought, okay, John's coming in, new board, new people, okay, let's see what happens. And then I see a sign, well, you gotta vote yes because our water's gonna turn brown. You gotta vote yes because our roads are gonna... I found that deceptive and very hurtful to me as a voter, that you would use that fear tactic, you know? And, you know, there were no other signs out there, just these signs. I'm going, wait a minute, my, my water. And I felt deceived by it. You mentioned that we dropped 62%. Well, you had 81 people, probably in those former administrations that were run crazy, 81 people is too many to run a small village like this at that time with 13,000 or 14,000 people. You didn't need 81 employees. So when you say, well, we're down to 63, well, you probably shouldn't have had 81 10 years ago. It's, you've got too many. But the village people, the village people are very nice people, not a company. Nobody wants to walk around knocking on doors and fill out petitions to do with this stuff. I had to do that. I don't like, nobody, we don't have time to walk around petitioning for two years to get this knocked down again. But I think what you're learning is, these are good people here. These are really good people. If you have an issue, and we need the water, if you tell us, okay, yeah, we need, we'll need, a water for like $10 a bill or something, and then maybe back it down. But this, to me, is just too big of a risk. I saw what happened with Kavanaugh. I saw the deception of what was going on, and I see what happens to political figures. I know what happens when they lose their minds. I don't know if that could happen to you. Last administration, we should, we worked awfully hard to knock that sports complex down. But somewhere along the line, we have to say no. We have to say no. I don't think that's gonna ruin our village if we say no to this. Matter of fact, I think it might help us. Because I think what I've heard tonight is a really good community who's saying like, John, you need some money, tell us what you need, but don't, don't take our rights away to make us, that we can't have referendums on stuff. I think that's what I've heard tonight. I know, I think Batavia is now trying to get rid of their home rule. I know they're, now, now communities are saying, we don't want this one, we see what this has done to us. And I just, I just, for me, this was called at one time the village of faith. That's what it was. I haven't seen that on any, anything anymore in Lamont. I haven't seen any village of faith. There's a lot of church peoples here, and these are people of faith. And so I'd like to see that brought, I'd like to see that brought back. Because in this issue, I somewhat feel, not totally, but a little bit deceived. Because I had more hope in this administration, and then all of a sudden, this pops up. And I know what home rule is, and we see what happens in Harvey, we know what happened in Bridgeview, we know what happened. So I, I'm kind of encouraged, I hope this doesn't pass, but I hope that the administration here, that you understand that these people aren't against you, but they don't wanna give up their rights and their, you know, when this home rule goes, we, we don't have control, there's no control. And I think that's what these people are upset about. Am I, am I okay with that? And that's why, and I was quite frank to you, John, I don't think it has much to do with you or the board, because I, I wanna trust you, I like you, we had breakfast, I get, I get that. But I also know what happens to some people's minds when they have free money and no accountability. No accountability, no transparency, that's, that's just waiting for a disaster. So I seen it in Illinois, and that's it. So thank you, and there you go.
I hope that's ended the Q and A, and this will open it up. You know, again, that's why, that's why it's a referendum. This is why we're doing this. You know, we're voting on this. You know, could, we've gotten the message out earlier, I, you know, I, I guess in retrospect, you know, we need to do it maybe 18 months in advance. But we really found out about this problem as we're going through the budget process in January. And that's when we first started talking about it. So again, lesson learned there, lesson learned there. But again, thanks for your thoughts.
Who put up those signs? Who generated those signs?
There's a, there's a private group that's doing that.
Okay, so it's not, not you and not the village?
I, I am part of that private group.
Did my tax, did I pay for this? Did I pay for this? Did my taxpayers pay, did my taxes pay for this?
Yes, it did.
Yes.
But not, obviously, the signs or anything like that. Again, I, I mean, just to comment on that, I mean, for the record, you know, Rick, you and I spoke.
Absolutely, John.
I mean, hey, as mayor, I gotta be neutral. You know, but, you know, as a resident, I could have my own thoughts, just like everyone in here. Okay, so again.
You know, just, you know, we talked about, you know, the properties that were taken over, right? Certain residents wanted to become part of Payless. And then there was a lawsuit that was brought, from what I understand, because the prior mayor annexed Lamont, and the property was not contiguous, and I put on the road lawsuit against that. Is that part of the debt that we have down for future debt? Is that part of what you're saying, is in settled debt in the courts? Is that part of what you're saying, isn't settled yet in the courts?
Yeah, so, no, the, the debt is, was brought on, you know, infrastructure purchases, you know, the food station.
Can you comment on how much the village of Lamont has spent in total acquiring properties on the east side on Route eighty-three? And then the other part of the question is, are they generating revenue? And was, why weren't the village residents involved in that decision-making process to acquire those properties? Thank you.
George, help me out with the numbers. Right, I believe right now, um, that property was purchased starting in, what, two, two thousand twelve, and the last piece was purchased in six, twenty sixteen. Um, I believe there's eight, eight and a half million dollars invested in, in that land. There's no more profit, or, no more property being purchased. Uh, that's another thing we're committed to as well. We're not going to, you know, acquire land, um, you know, right now, we have the downtown, you know, we're trying to get that redeveloped, we're on our third developer, they want that property, you know, purchased by the village. We can't do it, no one, you know, we don't have the money. Uh, but no, there's no property being purchased. Uh, right now, that's being, uh, that's under, uh, road construction, that's all part of I-DOT, uh, but, uh, there's no more property being purchased.
I'd like to add one more question.
Microphone, 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 never mind, you, you need the microphone, never mind.
Okay, my concern is this again, if home rule passes, we give our power to a few people, and you're looking at them right in front, okay? Now, regarding those signs about the water, our water is great. And I would not object to an increase in our water rates, I think they're very, very reasonable. And we could do it, like this gentleman said, we come together, and we can raise the revenue. What I'm concerned about is if home rule passes, we have a few people in, in administration that will make the laws and rules, I'm afraid that they might make a rule saying, we're getting Lake Michigan water. Look at Homer Glenn and their water rates, they're out of sight. We have wonderful water and good rates, I don't mind paying a little more, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, all right, we're done with the Q and A, uh, we'll open it up for public, uh, comment. Uh, if you wanna, and if you have a public comment, please go to the podium, uh, we'll allow you, you know, we're gonna try, again, we've been here a while, again, uh, if there's any new ideas, or if you wanna, you know, voice, whatever you need to voice, we're gonna limit it, we're gonna limit it to three minutes, obviously. This is for your public comment, there isn't any more Q and As.
I need to stand there, I just really don't want to go.
But again, uh, you want to, please, you know, state your name and, uh.
Okay. I'm Judith Apke, I live here in Lamont twenty years. Um, obviously, I am opposed to home rule, but I, I feel like it's always a quick solution to problems rather than investigating the other resources. Lamont's government in standing, you know, had made promises about their goals. And it was developing commercial and business that would financially support our community. That has not happened quick enough, at all. What has happened is the excess of residential development, which is very little revenue, and negatively impacts our resources, our home values, our utilities, and most definitely our schools. And more homes is more children, and grammar school is crowded enough. And a large part of our population is an aging population, myself included, that cannot afford or support added dollars on our taxes. So finding new ways to complete revenue and keep things that work are just what makes sense. I, I feel like Lamont has developed into a bedroom community, and most people leave town for most of their necessities. One grocery store is insane for the amount of people that we have in town, and Jewel is never that crowded, so they're going elsewhere. So, not only what can you, you could do for your community, but ask your community what we need, and then we'll work on how to fix the problems. Okay.
I think I'm loud enough you can hear me. You know, uh, I've been growing up in this town since I was a little kid, I remember when walking down Three O'Clock Street, was one of the main streets in the community, and I looked at the, they told us what the census was of the community, I think we were around four thousand at that time, might have been a little less. We have grown and leaps and bounds since that time, new schools, grocery stores, village, uh, village of facilities in different parts of the community, you name it, we got it, schools, everything, we paid for it by our vote to say that we can do this, we can back it. And still, the same thing goes for now. I don't believe in home rule, I'm looking at some of the things, these guys are gonna fall over when I tell you this, but I actually looked at a few of them, and they know that I never do that. Better Government Association, um, says no way for home rule. Merchants Association, retail merchants, no, no way, they don't want any part of it. There's multiple groups that say they don't want anything to do with, obviously, because we are one of the highest states in the country in our taxes, okay? That's why our, and that's not, this village's fault, it's our state's fault, okay? And we need to try not to keep letting people go by raising taxes here. If we need to raise something, we'll pay for it and be done with it. And maybe somewhere along the line, we'll find another way to deal with it. But to just go to home rule, let us have accountability in every form of government that we have. And that's really all I gotta say, I'm not gonna vote for home rule for that reason. I, I believe in these people, I believe in the people in the past. And I'm sure that because of our vote, we'll believe in the people in the, ahead of us. But with that gentleman just said, if we would've had home rule a few years ago, we might've had an albatross sitting downtown, and we don't want that to happen either, so thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a written loud voice as well, Dennis. Um, I, 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 first of all, thank you, John, for, for asking us here, okay? No thank you for putting this to a vote for us, um, but I, I get it, I understand where we are. But I've been in Lamont twenty-five, twenty-six years now, and I've always found the people, you need something, you ask your neighbor. I done found that when I lived up in, on, in, uh, on eighty-three, I didn't find that. I didn't find the relationships that I have in Lamont, I didn't find that. So I, I'm hoping that you, as a board, understand, you've got people who are here saying, yeah, I'm willing, I like my Lamont Village sticker, I'll pay more for that, 'cause I like it, that on my car, 'cause when I go to Bridgeview or someplace, I just, yeah, I'm okay, please, someone calls me over? Yeah, I'm from Lamont, okay? I, I, so I think what you're learning here is that these people don't want this. So I would ask for you to resend this for the vote, this coming, November sixth. Don't even put up for vote, just take it off, I'm sick of it. Because I think it's gonna be defeated, I hope it is defeated, but I don't want the village to be defeated. I don't want you guys to be defeated. I don't want you to go, oh, what are we gonna do now? Well, you know, you might have to let some people go, you might have to think differently, we might have to increase water, I don't know, but there are other options. For me, I've seen my nation, I've seen my state, I've seen my county, and now my village fall into this, this government mess. It's just government, every time I turn on the news, it's some government, some soldier, some politician, I, I can't get away from government, I can't get away from it. And I'm just, I'm just sick of it, I just wanna live my life. And I didn't wanna come to this meeting today, I don't want, I got, I wanna be with my wife, I wanna take her out to dinner. But here I am, and then I had to fill out the petition, so I know what it's like to go and fill out petitions, I don't wanna do that, I want you guys to do that, I want you to lead my government, and I wanna trust you. The sad thing is, I can't do that anymore. I don't tru, I don't trust you, John, I love you, and I'm good for, and I get, but I just don't, it's not you, I just don't trust how this thing's set up anymore. I used to trust, I used to trust, I just don't do it anymore. And that is why I'm hoping this does not pass, so, so why? So I can put more trust in you, so I can see you guys, you did a great job without the home rule. Well, for crying out loud, John solved this problem, and, and village board solved this problem without home rule. Man, I will vote for you again, if you, if you solve that. But don't come and ask me to give up my rights, my control, my transparency. I don't have time to come to village board meetings every Monday. I'm a working guy, I'm paying my taxes so I can pay the police officer's pension, that's why I work, so he gets his pension. And now you're asking me to get more involved in politics. So, yeah, I went out and talked to people, I, some of you remember, I talked to you guys about this. I don't wanna do that anymore, John, I want you guys to do it, does that make sense? Does, that's why, that's why you guys, the whole political thing in Illinois, it's just disgusting. And, 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 and what other thing? What other thing? Governor Rauter told me I would not pay for abortions, I'm paying for abortions now. I go to work tomorrow, I gotta pay for somebody's abortion, but he told me not. So I liked Governor Rauter when he ran, not anymore, because he lied to me. And I don't think he meant to, or I don't know what happened, but something happens to these people, they say, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna, and then what happens? They do it? Thank you.
No, I appreciate, hey, hey, this is one issue, that's why, you know, we're putting it to a referendum, that's, you know, one of the reasons why we look ahead, um, and, you know, should we do it next year? No one really comes up to vote, you know, in off-elections, this is gonna be everyone in town, it's gonna be here, that's why we're doing it, you know, I mean, one of the reasons, actually. So, again, that's why you have a referendum. Before we wrap it up, so.
That was something I wanted to point out, somebody asked about rescinding it, did we rescind it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I asked that question also, we cannot rescind it. Uh, so the decision was made to put it out for this election?
Yeah.
Because the board felt, the mayor thought, this would be a bigger voting ground, and why it's on this one.
Yeah.
So we didn't do it later, because that'll be a smaller election, we did it this one, because we wanted more people involved. And as far as rescinding it, once you went through it, we checked with our attorneys, we can't rescind it, so. That was a question we asked.
Sometimes attorneys are wrong. No, again, I thank, I thank everyone tonight, I know it's a bit late, I appreciate everyone coming out, and you know, get everyone out to vote, please do, thank you for coming out.